The Committee of the Whole of the Revere City Council for November 18, 2021 will come to order. Please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Point of order?
State your point.
May we have a two-minute recess?
Yes, two-minute recess.
Mr. President, I believe we have a quorum.
Okay, we're back in session here. Ruben? One minute, one minute. Does the clerk want to call the roll now? Okay.
Roll call of the members. Councilor Gennaro is absent. Councilor Guanasso is absent. Councilor Keefe is absent. Councilor McKenna?
Here.
Here. Councilor Morabito is absent. Councilor Nowosowski?
Here.
Here. Councilor Powers?
Here.
Here. Councilor Rotundo?
President.
Here. Councilor Serino is absent. Councilor Visconti?
Here.
Here. And Council President Sambudo?
Here.
Here. Quorum is present.
Wonderful. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I speak for the represencing team. We were not expecting the meeting on Monday to go the way it did, so I apologize.
Neither was I, so.
Fair enough. So I have some updates on some of the information that was discussed specifically around the 67, and I also want to respond to some of what I've been hearing around this topic and be able to respond to some of those issues as well. So first of all, I want to make sure that everyone on the council is aware. There is no relationship between the U.S. Census data and Revere voter data, no connection whatsoever. We did a full check of the voter record. We also did a check of the city census record. There is nobody registered in either voter records or the city census at that address. This is a U.S. Census data issue only, right? I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that, of that issue. The U.S. Census does not provide cities or states any of that data other than the total populations and some basic information, some basic demographic information such as what I shared the other day. So there is no access to that information. The only possible way to audit that information would be for the U.S. Commerce Department to audit the information, I'm afraid. There's no, there's no way that an audit can happen as far as we understand, and we verified that with the Secretary of State, who says that it is her understanding, sorry, the general counsel for the Secretary of State says that it is her understanding that it would not be possible for the state auditor to audit the Revere census count, okay? So I just thought that was worthwhile. So the 67 people who are counted in this one location, and I know I've heard that there are some other locations that may also be in question, this is actually not that unusual. This is actually pretty common. It's a, it's a, an oddly typical thing that happens in cities around the country, and I'm going to explain a little bit what I have learned, because I did not do the research on this until this week, but we've done a lot of research and found a little bit of why this, and a number of different reasons why this can happen. But I think you may have seen my comments in the news the other day. This is not the first time these people have appeared at this particular census block. We saw 35 of them 10, 10 years ago in 2010. There is 57 of them in 2000, and we believe that it's likely that there were people before that, but we can't go back before that because the census block situation kind of changed, and so we're not able to find details before 20 years ago to show that people have been using this address for one reason or another, going back more than the 20 years in question. It is likely, therefore, from the 35 to the 60, you know, the 57 to 35 to 67, that, you know, that there was a little bit of an undercount in 2010, and I for one think that it is still worthwhile to, to praise the Revere Counts team for the work that they did, because they have brought to Revere over the next decade probably hundreds of thousands of dollars with the incredible work that they did doing the count that was accomplished in 2020. So I'm going to offer five plausible explanations for the 67. I think it is pretty likely that all five had some role, probably no one explanation accounts for all of the 67, but I think the most important is the first one I'm going to offer, the first explanation. So over the last decade, the Census Bureau launched a series of data privacy strategies, which they call disclosure avoidance. And what disclosure avoidance does is they actually swap and move data around a little bit to make it really hard to, to identify individuals in census blocks that might be, that someone could figure out. So it is very likely that some of the data was moved, what they call, they create noise in order to move individuals into a block so that they cannot be identified as easily from a different block. So that is, this is sort of a relatively new process just in the last decade. It has been challenged in the federal court by several states, and the courts have ruled in favor of the U.S. government in this case, in the disclosure avoidance. If you'd like more details, I have some links I can share to any city councils that want more detail on this. I'm happy to share that.
And you'll do that by email after this meeting?
I'll send everything to the clerk and.
Great.
And Clark Malnich, if you could just remind me the specific things that you would need from me, and I'm happy to share those with you.
Good, thanks.
Okay. We also know that enumerators, so the federal census enumerators, those are the only people that can assist someone in actually filling out a, a U.S. Census form directly, and those enumerators use past addresses to, to search for individuals who have filled out a prior census and have not filled out the existing census. So it is very likely that those problems going back, we know 20 years, we know 10 years, possibly even further back than that, that they could have used that data to find the individuals and update the census and perhaps not update the addresses as they, they might have been supposed to have done. We also know that there are some individuals, especially last year, there were a lot of situations that took place last year, sort of conversations on the national scale in 2020, where, where people may not have wanted the federal government to know where they lived, that they wanted to fill out a census, they wanted to do their civic duty, they wanted to assist the city of Revere in providing data that could help bring in revenue for the city, because these numbers bring in a large amount of revenue for the city from the federal government, and that they could decide that they want to not provide the correct address. And that is certainly possible. I don't have all the details of who would have done that or why it would have happened, but I think that explains sort of that broadly. We also know that the U.S. Census has a practice of counting people who are living outdoors, people who we might consider homeless or otherwise do not have a residence, and they often log them at an address near where they may be staying. I don't have evidence that they did this. I just say this is one of the things that may have happened in this particular case, at this location and at other nearby locations as well. I mean, the last of the five reasons is that there are workers who have temporary residences near their workplace, they may actually be relatively far from where they actually live and may use that as, may use their workplace as an address when filling out a census for one reason or another. So, you know, I'm not saying any one of these explains 67. I don't think any one of these explains the 67. I think the combination of these five adds up to the 67, and as I've mentioned, this is not a new problem for the city. So I just want to talk about a couple of other things, if I may. We did talk to the general counsel for the Secretary of State, and I think it's worth noting that this is the third census that she has worked on, and this is the first time she's ever heard of a municipality complaint of an overcount. She hears a lot of complaints about undercounts, and a lot of cities take actions about undercounts. She's never heard of an overcount. She's also never heard of a city refusing to submit maps due to an allegation of fraud, and, and yeah, I think I'll rest on that for now. I just want to talk briefly about the impact of not submitting a map to the, to the Secretary of State and the, I get this wrong, the local election, LEDRC? The Local Election District Review Commission. Thank you. So the impact of not submitting the map is that the state will appoint a master who will be charged with creating a represencing map on Revere's behalf. That would take place by December 15th if we do not provide a map. The state reserves the right to use the map we propose, but they also could use their own map. And noting that the Secretary of State, who, you know, we kind of know as the prince of darkness, could choose to utilize that information that we have used, could choose not to use information that we have used, for instance, where, where elected officials live in drawing those maps, where, and that is an impact that we have no control over, is they would draw the map and then just send it to us. And on top of that, they would bill the city for the work of this master, and I would like to know how much they would bill us, and the Secretary of State's office could not answer that question because they've never had to do it before. The last thing I think I just want to note is the work of the Revere Counts Committee, because that seemed to come into some question last week, sorry, Monday, this week. It's been a long week. The Revere Counts group outreach to residents to urge them to complete their censuses, to complete them online, and to just to respond to the federal census enumerators when they came calling or knocking at their door. The instructions to all Revere Counts staff and grantees was very clear. They were never allowed to assist anyone in filling out a U.S. Census form without a federal census numerator present. That is in fact not legal to fill it out without a U.S. Census numerator present. So at every Revere Counts event, there was a federal census numerator, and they organized that through the U.S. Census, the local U.S. Census connections that they had. There were eight staff and five mini-grantees. The mini-grantees were actually hired by the Secretary of State's office and not by, by the city, and, yeah, and as I mentioned, I think before, the enumerators did use past addresses to do their targeting work in some cases to try to find people who had not completed the census. So I think that kind of summarizes what I have learned. I mean, I, you know, we have our outside counsel here. She can read chapter and verse on a lot of these things. If you want a lot more detail, I wanted to start by just giving you the, the short summary, because I didn't want to waste your time, but if you want the chapter and verse, I have no doubt that Kate would be happy to provide that for you. So with that, I'm happy to turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Councilor Nowosowski, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Believe it or not, I'm glad I started this, because it's clearing up a lot of issues. I'm not happy with any of those explanations. And may I say that I also find two more locations for a total of 189 people. Three locations, and I found one block that wasn't even numbered. So I don't know how they could do something and not number a block where there are numerous houses and people living in. So I'm just not happy with the way this is coming down, and I know you mentioned that they've been like that in the last two censuses, which I have been involved in, may I say, but there wasn't an issue then. It wasn't affecting the precinct lines. It wasn't affecting the ward lines. Now it is, so it sticks out like a sore thumb as far as I'm concerned, and I'm very upset at it. I, I still say that there's some kind of fraud and nastiness going on with something like this, and I don't blame, and I don't believe that the U.S. Commerce Department and the Census Department should allow, be allowed to put people where they don't belong, in empty lots, granting you may have homeless people, fine. Find a building that has homes in them that they can use, not an open lot, and it's, you know, I'm saying my line, my, my ward should be different based on these 100, the reduction of these potential 189 people, so.
It wouldn't necessarily be a reduction, Counselor.
I don't, excuse me?
It wouldn't necessarily be a reduction. It would be moving them around to the location that they think they belong.
Maybe, maybe.
Okay.
But, you know, some of the ward line, you know, the street lines that they should have used, they didn't, you know, I think they were being lazy, you know, because I can tell you down behind the Garfield School, there's a street there that goes right up to the MBTA tracks that they've used as boundary lines, and even if those, those numbers go into that block, so be it. You know, I still want to know what that number is in that block in front of the high, at the corner of Cove Street and Garfield Ave, across from the Garfield School. Where does that number come in? How will that affect if you add a number to it? Was there a number added to it and forgot to put it in? I don't know, but I am definitely not happy with what's going on here, and I don't care what they say. I will not vote for this census, this map at all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Rotundo?
I actually just had the opportunity to take a look at several areas, in particular 4-2. The McKinley School has 95, 71, it looks like people, or 95, and then Firmwood, that area in that neighborhood, if that's what I'm looking at, looks like.
What's that, Ward 4?
Ward 4, 4-2.
Oh, you said Ward 2. You confused me.
No, 4-2, 4-2.
Oh, 4-2, okay.
Yep, so 4-2 is 240. Now, as far as recommending the state auditor to audit it, we gave out $22,000 to Revere Counts via grant, if I'm not mistaken. The audit that we audited for the DPW, which found $4.25 million worth of equipment and accounted for, was $25,000. So that said, you're probably right, the state auditor might not be the person to go to, the inspector general, or the federal government might be, or the Census Bureau to have it audit, that would be my thought. The audit for the state would be the money that we gave them. So that said, that's my concern, and now I'm, I'm being told by Counselor Nowosowski about another area in his ward where I live. In particular, I know the homeless population, as does Council Elect Sylvesteri does, and I can tell you the numbers that are promoted down here are not the case. Now, I understand, or presuming this, and correct me if I'm wrong, the people that you are possibly articulating that might not wish to be identified, or maybe people that have different status issues, i- is that what you're referring to, or?
That could be one group, yeah.
Okay. So if, if that was the case, that's fine, I, I understand that, but not, they would not pick one particular area, they would not take one particular park, it would be where you would engage them. I live right across from Sandler Park. I can tell you, I, I don't recall that taking place every day, every night. I've been injured for the past year and a half, so I don't, I don't recall that. In fact, Ira has seen me out there pretty much every day. You know, we greet each other. But that said, just there itself, as well as over at Atlas Autobody, not to mention them, or for that matter, now looking at the McKinley School with 95 people, I mean, it's, it's, this is John's, not mine. I mean, these, this is a serious issue, so the question is, you know, many, many, many years ago, I was kind of chattled for bringing up the issues of storm surge, and now we're in a $200 million bid with the EPA paying for that, that malfeasance. That's $200 million that we paid for by mistake, because we didn't report appropriately, and that was something that I had asked for. Now we go forward with the census, I don't know, could we be culpable for something else? I don't know. I'm not an attorney, I don't know that answer. That's why I prefer to have someone outside of the city give me that answer, and that's my only issue here, is to protect the city. So for example, and I'm surmising, and I don't know this, obviously, legal counsel's here, and they would know this, I don't know this answer. If we filed an improper census that elevated our census number, and then it was found the next census that our numbers decreased, but yet our, our residents' number by voters increased, is, is there an issue there? Do we, do we get penalized some way? Can we be penalized some ways? So I'd like to know, you know, don't get me wrong, I, I like the idea of more census because we, we return more money to the people of the city of Revere. I mean, there's the benefit, but the question is, are we going to be accountable to that? Is there a legal issue there?
Through you, Mr. President, to Counselor Rotundo. The answer to the question is?
Go ahead.
The answer is no. The, the city of Revere did not file the census. The federal census enumerators filed the census. We had no direct role in the numbers that were counted. So the city of Revere has no culpability, has no role, there's no possibility, it's never happened that I've ever heard about, and I don't think that anyone has ever heard about, that the census came back, changed the numbers after the fact, and then asked for money back. That is unheard of, and I guarantee you that will not happen here.
Through you, Mr. President, and again, that was my only fear, and having a mother that actually used to do the census, you know, when I was younger, just to earn a couple extra bucks, I, I get that, that's, it, it's, those are federal dollars, they're not city dollars. But the people that we paid through the grant process, was that city dollars or was that federal dollars?
I am told that the, the mini-grants were the Secretary of State. I don't know if there were other grants that came from the state, and I'm not responding to the issue of an audit of the finances of the city. I'm responding to the question of an audit.
I understand that.
Of the, of the individuals, and I could tell you that we have no ability, the Secretary of State, the state auditor has no ability.
The Secretary of State does have an ability to audit the money that they gave out.
Sure, but not, not the people who were counted.
If that, I, I don't know that answer, so I'm not going to say, because I'm not an attorney, and I guess the question is, going on our Counselor Nowosowski's commentary, were there certain people predisposed to do something in particular? And if that's possible, was it to affect possibly gerrymander certain areas based upon the possibility of changing a census blocks, considering that there is development down the beach now, and there's development in his neighborhood? I don't know. And I, I could understand why he would speculate that or think like that when you have, was it two or three different places in your ward that have areas that have this type of abnormality?
And I can appreciate Counselor Nowosowski's unhappiness with the fact that there's a jag in the line, but I would note that the jag in the line has no voters in it, so it actually has no impact on the actual voting process. It just looks funny. That's the issue. And so, so the idea that someone would perpetrate some kind of fraud in order to make lines look funny on the idea that they somehow knew that we were going to draw a line there, which of course, nobody could have known, because we didn't know we were going to draw the line there until our mapping people figured out that that was the only place to draw the line.
And as equally, you know, kind of, I guess serendipitous, is that me and Counselor Nowosowski kind of agree on the same issue of concern. So me and him don't agree all the time. When, when that happens, there's obviously, you know, a measure of concern here.
I'm not saying I'm not, I'm not saying I'm not concerned about the fact that there are people counted in these odd locations. I'm just saying that no crime has been committed in doing so.
And I don't believe anybody here is saying that. I don't believe anybody here is saying that. I believe there's concern. If someone's saying that there's fraud, then obviously that, that's, that's a crime. Asking for an audit's not saying that there's fraud.
An, an, no, but the audit of finances is one thing. The audit of human beings is suggesting that there is something amiss, and I don't think that there's anything amiss with the numbers, other than people don't belong in places where there's no residents, and so they clearly have been moved or somehow identified in a location that don't make sense.
Unless people are cohabitating at the McKinley School or Sandler Park, or for that matter, over at Atlas Autobody, then obviously we, we have to, you know, put our hands up on that one.
Any other counselors? Counselor Powers?
Ruben, you know, in past situations, 10 years ago, similar situation, redistricting, it's always been very clear on the information we did receive that if a certain street or a portion of that street was in a particular ward, it was clearly defined. This to me, I mean, you know, if you look at it, you, you can't tell what streets are where. All you can see is, is a bunch of streets grouped together.
So first of all, we have a larger version of the map here, and if anyone wants, I have it on my computer, I can zoom in as close as you want to see. I can zoom in right to the exact 67 block you want to see, so, I mean, if, if there's a specific thing that you want to see, I can get my computer, we can put it up on the screen for everyone to see. I apologize that these maps were not printed in, in large format, but I hope that between the online version and the big map I provided, that you'd be able to see everything that you need. I'm not trying to hide anything.
No, I, I'm not saying you are, and I'm not inferring that, but what I, what I am saying is that in the past, whether it came through the Commonwealth or wherever, we've always been able to look at a particular street. I'll give you, I'm going to give you an example. When I first got elected, half of Kimball Avenue was in Ward 5. Half of Ambrose Street was in Ward 5, Precinct 3. I knew exactly where the lines were drawn, because I was given that information from, because, I don't believe it was yourself, but that point, I think it was the Commonwealth, okay? And since then, it's, it's changed. I now have none of Kimball Avenue, I now have all of Ambrose Street. In the existing plan we have now, looking at this information here, it's impossible for me to tell.
Right. I can email you the PDF of exactly the location you want, and like I said, if you want me to put that up on the screen, I can show you. All of that is here, and I, I know that those printouts are a little smaller than you'd like, and I appreciate that. That's why I tried to print each ward separately to get a little closer, but I didn't, you know, I didn't have like giant paper that I could.
I would like to see that.
Sure.
Not necessarily here, but I would like to see.
Happy to show it to you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, through you.
Go ahead. Counselor Rotundo?
I'm also looking at, again, Foster Street, which incorporates two banks, a lumberyard, and I believe several houses, and there's maybe two houses there. There's 100, four houses, we'll call it, 109 people for that area. I know that area. I mean, from Park Ave to Foster Street, that whole area, that whole park, that, that's mostly commercial. It's all commercial, actually, except for maybe four homes. I mean, I don't know how you can fit four, you know, 109 people in four, you know, four buildings, especially when, you know, they're not, you know, high rises.
buildings, especially when, you know, they're not high rises. I know you have something to do with that.
I think if we look at other cities, we will find the exact same anomalies.
Mr. President?
Counsel Serena.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Cantor. Just wondering, who draws the census blocks? So you have, you know, you have census takers who, and we all fill out the census, but who determines how many are in each block and how they're divided and drawn, particularly when they might not have awareness of the neighborhood or, you know, knowing that there's an auto body shop or what have you?
I could answer, but I think it makes more sense for our mapmaker to do the answering for us, so invite James Clu to come on up and answer that.
Thank you. So from my understanding, it is the census itself. They do do it with aerial imagery, so what they'll do is they'll take a flyover from a plane, and they'll examine what they consider right-ofways, you know? So that includes both road, train, and I believe in some cases, if they're large enough pedestrian right-ofways, they'll take watercourses and water bodies. And in some cases, if the blocks start getting too large, I believe they can also use what they call the invisible boundary, so they will use properties, although they avoid as a general course. But basically, it's -- I couldn't tell you the exact committee, like the census has a million in one committee, some handle various types of things, but it is internal to the Commerce Department and the census. They create what they call a base set of lines, and I cannot tell you what the acronym is right now. It's called Tiger Data. I think it's -- I know the last word is road. But Tiger Data is the base geographic layers that they'll bring in those streams. A lot of times, they'll take that data from their partners, which will be cities and towns, so probably a good course heading into the next census would be to get local data from us as well provided as we can to them. But they do generate a lot of that on their own and gather that, so. And then what they don't have is what comes out of the area. So it's -- the blocks themselves are from the census, is the simple answer. Or do you have any?
Counsel, yeah, Counsel Vice President Visconti.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. President, to Mr. Cantor. I guess I'm just trying to digest all of it. And from what I'm hearing, it seems as though the census data is flawed quite a bit, all right? And I'm just hearing it, right? We can agree, I think, that if they're reporting people that are in areas that are not homes, that for some reason, it's flawed for one reason or another. And that flaw is affecting one of the wards where it's changing the lines. Is that correct?
Yeah, there is one jagged line that has been added to a precinct. So the line in question, Counsel Nowosowski would like to be, I believe, in Ward 2, Precinct 2, and instead, it's in Ward 2, Precinct 1, or maybe I have that flipped. But that's it. There are no voters impacted by that line, but there is, it is an odd line.
I don't think that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Counsel Nowosowski, you're not complaining about just that jagged edge. Is that correct?
If I may, Mr. President--
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
The initial view was to try and think about street sweeping and just make Centennial Ave. as a borderline for street sweeping on one side and the street sweeping the other. And now this takes the people that are in Waverly Ave. and Part of North Sher Road into a different street sweeping mode. And that's where it started. It was very simple. And I saw this, and I said, "Well, why don't we just straighten that out and make it happen?" And then, you know, then Ruben says, "No, we can't because there's 67 bodies there, and that would throw the percentages off." So--
Sorry. I don't know of any impact of street sweeping or trash pickup or anything else with this change.
If I may, Mr. President. You don't. I do. You have your job. I have my job. Apples and oranges. So that was my reason for picking it out. It wasn't that I was targeting the 67 initially, but when you said I couldn't draw and move that line because of the census numbers, that's what kicked this whole thing off. You know, and I still say it's wrong. Thank you. That's through you to Counsel.
Counsel Vice President, you have anything else? Thank you. Counsel Serena.
Thank you, Mr. President. One more question, either for the mapmaker or perhaps the attorney, through you, Mr. President. Do you know of any other surrounding communities that are, you know, that have seen similar? Mr. Cantor alluded to that, you know, other communities probably, if they took a close look, would find similar issues with their census data. Are you aware of any that, you know, pop out or stick out?
Press the button, please.
Excuse me. Mr. President, through you, I'll speak to Member Counsel Serena. I did talk to the Secretary of State's Election Division Chair, and she did tell me that other municipalities in the Commonwealth have areas in census blocks where maybe there's not a building or a home, but several individuals are listed in the census block, and they -- and that it could be all the reasons that Ruben Cantor said earlier. But no one knows, right? These numbers belong to the United States government, and they're taken by the federal census. And I think Ruben covered this, but I'd just like to repeat, the federal constitution puts an obligation that every 10 years, we have to do enumeration, right? We have to count the people, full stop. But there's also federal laws that require that that information be private. And so there's a tension. And so in the last 10 years, as folks get more sophisticated with using data, and people like James, not me, get more sophisticated using data, it becomes harder and harder to protect individuals' privacy. And so this year for the 2020 census, they tried for the first time, and Ruben mentioned this, something called privacy differration, which led to litigation. Some states sued about it because they said this will not be accurate because it deliberately blurs some of the data so that you can't tell that Counsel Nowosowski lives where he does and that Ruben Cantor lives where he does. It's to protect our own privacy, which we all agree is also a constitutional right, correct? So folks, states sued, saying this isn't going to lead to accurate information. It's a very small percentage. So this doesn't fully explain the 67 question, but it is part of the explanation, is that the data is deliberately blurred to hide exactly where someone is, so they can't tell when we fill out the census where we live and we aren't giving up our privacy rights. So yes, I have heard that other municipalities right here in the Commonwealth have some places that raise an eyebrow, and you're like, "I didn't know that people live there." But I was also told that no other municipality has had complaints either about an overcount and nor have they had complaints that this is fraudulent. You're welcome.
Counsel Rotundo.
Through you to the attorney. My understanding is also, as far as privacy rights are concerned, I mean, it's like a dual-edged sword. Here, the state and federal government, they're asking for your medical information, which includes your name and whether you've been vaccinated or not. That is obviously a identifier because it gives you where you live, and more importantly, whether you're vaccinated. And yet here, you're telling me, which, and I totally agree with you, they don't want your personal data. No, no. And the gentleman between you and Mr. Cantor will gleefully tell you, if he's a data specialist, that information's out there on everybody. They just had the head of Google for the Senate, I believe, the Congress, and data is uploaded through this device 386 times a minute, they said, or something crazy like that. But the question that I have is, you know, the accuracy, you know, would it cause an issue? And Mr. Cantor has allayed that issue for me, that it wouldn't cause us any issue. I have asked counselors in other communities whether they've seen similar issues. They have not. I've asked one or two in another community, and they say that they have. So I guess the question is, we render this, we vote on it, we give it a yes, and, you know, the accuracy is in the hands of the federal government, so be it. And the data, you know, the census blocks are developed randomly, if that's not correct.
It's not, sorry. It's not quite randomly, but it is out of our hands, right? It's the -- it's based on the physical features of the land.
Right, the topography--
Correct. The streets, the infrastructure.
And the indigenous population.
No. So they draw the lines for blocks, regardless of population. There was no, you can have blocks, in fact, there are many blocks with fewer people, and you can have blocks with thousands of people. That block has zero crime or population. They specifically draw it, you know, as relatively compact as they can, but to encompass physical features, and then they attribute that with the population, so--
Right. So for example, 4-1, the physical feature is on Fennel Street around the 300 block where the Plaza Gialldi is. It faces Route 1, and you have 109 people that are there. That is a, you know, car wash with no more than probably 50 people that live in that area. I live right down the street from it. I know it personally. But yet it says 109 people there, which I can't understand.
I'm not arguing for the accuracy of the population--
Right, right.
But they would have drawn the block--
Based upon that line.
On that line.
I see the geography, you know, based upon, you've got a highway--
Correct.
You've got, you know, basically making that whole division there, and you've got the school where 4-2 is going up Park Avenue where you have a hill. So I can see the geography, elevation, et cetera.
Yeah. So that would have drawn the boundary, and then as the census takers either personally interviewed people as part of the census, or they received the mailed--
But how did the line shift? How does that process take place and why? That's, I guess, part of the questioning here.
That's done every 10 years before, so it would be done, I think it's a year out ahead of the census, so when they--
Who does that?
The census itself.
So the city has no prospect in it? The census takers have no prospect in it?
Correct, yeah.
This is just pure misfortune in the end, or not misfortune, but just the way that this came about was Counsel Nowosowski was, like usual, being very meticulous. And, you know, when you see something like that, 67 in the park, you kind of--
No, and I understand.
You kind of start wondering things, and I respect that.
You can ask Ruben, I am anal about data accuracy. Like, this is not something that we control, and we don't have--
I like your originality.
Yeah. It's just the census, we were literally handed both the boundaries and the numbers from the census, and the state says, "Draw these lines on it," and that's where we came in. The only other city involvement, as Ruben said, was with Revere Counts, which was to get people to respond. But they don't count, they don't do anything. That's strictly the Census Department. So they say, specifically, they'll say, you know, for people that they think live in the city but might be scared to respond or might not want to respond, "Please respond because the city can use your help and use the money." That was their--
Right. Those people that might have status issues, things of that nature--
In some cases, yeah.
Yeah, they wish not to be identified, and I get that. And, you know, we have an immigrant population in the city that don't want to be identified for obvious reasons. Some of them come from countries in which they're prosecuted and persecuted by their own government. So I get that totally. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
So any other counselors? So let me just say that this has been, I'll be kind, enlightening. This has been enlightening. I think I trust the federal government less now than I did before the beginning of this process. But I don't see any criminality or anything on the part of any of the census takers. We were, I think, taken back by these numbers, and some of us might have said some things that weren't accurate or were an overreach. And I now see it, like I said, I trust the federal government less, but it is part of the process, and, you know, we thank everybody who's done the work, and obviously, nobody was counting people. They were just trying to solicit people to fill out their census forms. So I think at this point, we need to call for a vote on the mapping, or-- No? Okay. My colleagues have a different attitude here. Counsel Serena.
Mr. President, from a procedural perspective, do we, through you to the clerk, do we have to vote on it as a committee of the whole? Would we not take this up just in a general--
It's going to come up to the city council. We have to vote as a committee as a whole, and it goes, we recommend to the full city council what the vote is, but we have to take a vote on what our recommendation is. So this is just like a sub, a large subcommittee, and that's the way I see it. Am I correct? Okay. So that's-- Name an address for the record, Counsel.
Mark Celestree, 501 Revere Beach Parkway. And Counsel Nowosowski, I do understand your point, and as has been pointed out a few times, but in our neighborhood, we do have a very large immigrant population that also a battered women's shelter is in that neighborhood. So if the census was taking them and not having to put their address, has anyone asked the census takers if they have maybe planned that and said that, "Okay, if you have an immigrant who is undocumented or doesn't want to give their location, we're going to use McKinley School or this park"? Has anyone asked the census takers these questions? Because maybe this wasn't done maliciously, but on purpose to protect people that didn't want to give their locations and identities.
Well, that's kind of a contradiction on what we were told. So that, because the census takers, meaning the Revere local people, are just simply soliciting people to fill out their census. They have no direct effect on what block it goes in. Is that correct? Or did I misunderstand the whole thing?
I think we're sort of, there's the Revere Counts staff, which are outreach workers, and then there's the U.S. federal census enumerators.
Right.
I think what Counsel-elect Sylvester is suggesting is that the enumerators may have done this--
Oh, if that--
--which might be in line with one of the theories that I kind of gave--
Well, if that's what he's suggesting, yeah, that's obviously. I thought we were talking about the local people. Okay, well, yeah, it's still, we know the reasons, and I'm still skeptical, but I'm going to stay that way. And that's the way I've been all my life, and I don't think I'm going to change at this late age. So we will take a vote on whether to recommend this to the full city council favorably or unfavorably. Madam Clerk, do you want to call the roll?
On the motion, Counsel Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Guanasa is absent. Counsel Keefe is absent. Counsel McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morabito is absent. Counsel Nowosowski?
No.
No, Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotundo?
No.
No, Counsel Serena?
No.
No, Counsel Visconti?
No.
No, and Counsel President Sambudo?
No.
No, the map, re-presincting map, will not receive a favorable recommendation for the full city council.
So this gets recommended unfavorably to the city council. We'll see what happens on Monday night. That ends this committee as a whole. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Through you, Mr. President, if we can--
Go right ahead. Who are you going to ask a question to?
I do have a question.
To who?
Actually, through you to the attorney. I forgot your name. I do apologize.
Good evening. Kate Cook.
Thank you, Attorney Cook. I truly appreciate it. As I do and my other counselors do have our differences, by not accepting the census count, what does that do?
So technically, I think you're not accepting, I mean, the vote that you just took not to vote unfavorably on the map would mean if the, I don't know, the next--
So the numbers are not changed, but the districting-- So, the numbers are not changed, but the districting is the issue?
Right.
Thank you.
So, if the council does not approve a map by December 15, 2021, the state committee, the LEDRC, the Local Election District Review Commission, will create a map for you and approve it. And I did, I did let the Secretary of State's Election Division Chair know that there'd been a resolution on Monday about an audit, and it was told to me that notwithstanding audits or other inquiries-
Right.
-the council may want to proceed with, LEDRC will still continue with its timetable of finalizing a map, and as Ruben said, there is the potential of a master being appointed under the law and the city having to pay the bill.
And through you to the attorney, my understanding that would not change our issues with the census. They would still count the numbers that were counted. It only would go to the state, and the state would then choose the lines accordingly, as you had just said.
Excuse me, and I don't mean to interrupt.
Counselor Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Will they also accept the lines that were given? Could they accept those lines as well?
So, now you're doing what lawyers call a compound question?
Yeah.
I have to admit, I'm not following exactly what the question is. Which lines?
Okay, so if we're, if it's been voted out unfavorably, okay, it goes to the federal government or the state?
The state.
Okay, and they will make the determination after that. Those lines that have been drawn can also, they can also accept those lines that were drawn and done and overrule us. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, yes. Or they could do something totally different. We lose, the city would lose control of the map. The council currently has a prerogative to approve the map, but the state would approve a map.
I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you. I believe, Mr. President, the-
Go ahead.
-the gentleman from-
I would not count at all that they would use those lines. They had already submitted their own lines that had some very strange precinct lines, too, for example. We were quite struck because, we don't have it on the map, but they had, I think it was Ward 5, Precinct 1, that went all the way from where I think Revere Street hit.
They split Pointe de Pines.
Yeah, they split the entirety of Pointe de Pines, north, into two precincts, parallel north-south direction. It was, it would not have been very convenient for voters, so that is a potential concern. So, yeah, they, we, this map is what we came up with. Obviously, I don't work directly for the city, but the city's map, I think, is much more favorable to the city's residents than what the Secretary of State had already done. I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, well, it appears there's going to be a lot more discussion Monday night, and everybody will have to make a decision if they want to stick with a no vote and what the consequences of that are. So, we're adjourned until Monday at 6:00 p.m.?